Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of January 28th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of January 14th, 2020. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Item four is a presentation of awards from the Oklahoma Municipal League to City of Norman employees who have completed 25 years of continuous service. I'll entertain a motion to allow the presentation of the awards.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to allow the presentation of the awards. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The presentation passes unanimously.
I'm going to join Mayor Matt White from El Reno as we present the awards.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's call the people up here. I want to make sure that we understand this is from the Oklahoma Municipal League and we want to ensure these people, all the things they do for us, everything they have done for us over the last 25 years, quarter of a century. We want to make sure and recognize these wonderful employees. We always talk about, all of us, about how the citizens are the body of the community and the employees are absolutely the heart and soul of the working bodies. So we want to really acknowledge these people. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll let you read those presentations.
Ms. Sharon Hamilton. Come on, Mayor.
We'll put right here a good picture.
Put you in the middle here.
Make us look good. Thank you, Sharon. Mayor?
Ms. Joyce Green.
Joyce, congratulations. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here goes Mayor.
Mayor. Mr. Eric Leonbauer.
Thank you so much for your service.
Very much.
We miss you here at City Hall.
I know.
I'm glad she said your last name and not me. And the last one, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Anthony Riddles. Thank you so much for your service.
Once again, Mayor, thank you so much for having us at OML and thank you all for your participation in Oklahoma Municipal League. You don't know how much representation Mayor Clark brings to the class that she brings to the OML and we really appreciate her leadership that she does and ensures that us cities all stick together and move forward in one direction and that's for the best, betterment of Oklahoma. So thank you all and thank your own employees and congratulations on four wonderful outstanding employees that did 25 years of outstanding service to the city of Norman. Thank you so much for the bottom of OML's heart.
Thank you so much.
And you all don't know me, but Mayor Clark does, but I'm pretty famous. I do these world famous selfies, so let's get right here.
And see, I wasn't the first one to be a selfie mayor. All right, you send that to me, Mayor White.
Thank you all.
Thank you again to the Oklahoma Municipal League for recognizing that service and to Mayor White from driving down here from El Reno. Item five, presentation of reaccreditation to the city of Norman by the American Public Works Association. I'll entertain a motion to allow the presentation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to allow the presentation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to allow the presentation passes unanimously.
I would like to recognize David Fabiano, APWA Regional Director, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here this evening and to address you. Again, I am David Fabiano. I'm the Director for Region Seven of the American Public Works Association. The American Public Works Association represents more than 30,000 public works professionals across North America in the United States and Canada in 63 chapters. Oklahoma has a chapter of the American Public Works Association that's been in existence for more than 60 years. We're very happy to have them as part of Region Seven. They're a wonderful example. Thank you for letting me come to your beautiful city tonight. It is a little bit chilly. I come from the town of Gilbert, Arizona. Gilbert, Arizona is a city very similar to the city of Norman. One of the things I learned today in visiting with some of the leadership of the different departments in the town, excuse me, in the city, is that you're a lean organization. I work for a lean organization as well. There are sometimes people accused that of being a four-letter word, but it's a good four-letter word because it helps government to be responsible. And this is the place where most government affects everybody's lives, is here at the local level. Thank you for your service to the citizens of the city of Norman, Oklahoma. I appreciate that very much. I found out today that you have more than $4 billion worth of public works infrastructure in your town. Public works infrastructure are things that people touch every single day of their lives. That doesn't just happen in the public works department. That happens throughout many different departments in the town. There are some individuals that I'd like to call up here if they would come and join me, please. Your Utilities Director, Mr. Ken Kaminski. Your Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Judd Foster. And your Public Works Director, Mr. Sean O'Leary. These gentlemen and their teams represent about a third of the workforce here in the city of Norman, Oklahoma. That $4 billion worth of infrastructure, their teams take care of. They make sure that your citizens have places to go and enjoy the recreation and the outdoors within the city. They make sure that every morning when you get up, you can go and take a shower and go out and present yourself clean to go about the commerce of your daily life the way that you want to do so. They make sure that those streets that you drive on, those traffic signals, they actually do work. They frustrate you regularly, but they work and that those streets are there to drive on and to drive on safely. It's with their leadership that this reaccreditation is possible. There's also another couple of other individuals I want to call out here. Ms. Sidney Carstens worked as the Accreditation Manager. Sidney, did you mind coming forward as well? The Executive Committee for that reaccreditation process was Sidney, leading it as Accreditation Manager. And also Mr. Angelo Lombardo, who is your Streets, excuse me, Transportation Division Manager. Angelo, if you could come up. And then there's... And then Sean served on that as well. There's another individual, Ms. Jackie Crum... I'm going to mess this up, I'm sorry. Crumri. Ms. Jackie Crumri from the Human Resources Department is the Hiring and Training Division Manager for their Human Resources, has been an outstanding asset to the city of Norman, Oklahoma for many years. She was Accreditation Manager when Norman first became accredited in 2010. And if she is available, I'd love to have her join us. I did not have a chance to meet her. There are a lot of other people that are not here with us today, with me today, as we're making this presentation. This is not something that these individuals do. Each one of them spoke of dedicated team members, down to the line staff, coming together, looking at all the business practices and all the things that you have to deliver on each and every day for all of the residents of the city of Norman and making sure that you have standard operating procedures, clear protocols and policies in place so that they can respond to the needs of your citizens appropriately. They can take care of that $4 billion plus worth of infrastructure and manage it in a way that is responsible to every single citizen of the city of Norman. You have a tremendous team working for you. They couldn't do it alone. They also had to have the assistance of your Finance Department, the Managers Office, your information technology. It takes everyone to do this. Of the 600-plus practices that you can be accredited in, the city of Norman is accredited in 590. It's just over 600. Now, I wanted to let you know what kind of an elite group, an elite team that you have here working for you. In the state of Oklahoma, there are two accredited agencies, Norman and the city of Edmund. That's it. You're in the top 1% in the state of Oklahoma. You're in better than the top 1% when you go across all of North America because less than 1% of the public agencies within the North America are accredited agencies. You have an outstanding team and I want to recommend them to you for their professionalism and for the dedication that they bring. And I have a plaque here that we want to provide to them so that it can hang up in your city hall to let the citizens of this great city of Norman know how dedicated the professionals that work for them each and every day are. And also, thank you. Without your support, as the common council of the city of Norman, they would not be able to accomplish the work that they do each day.
Awesome. Thank you so much. What a nice line.
Photo opportunity.
One picture, one picture.
Yeah, don't run away. So less than 1% of cities in North America have this accreditation.
Madam Mayor, if I may approach the dais one last time. I would like to recognize a couple of individuals from the Oklahoma Chapter Leadership. Mr. Todd Cochran, who is the Chapter Treasurer for the Oklahoma Chapter of the American Public Works Association, who works for POON Associates up in Oklahoma City. He is here with us tonight, if he could stand. And also Mr. Paul DeAndrea. You might recognize Paul. Paul actually works for the city of Oklahoma, the city of Norman, excuse me. And Paul is the Oklahoma Chapter's delegate tonight, here, representing the leadership of the Oklahoma Chapter of the American Public Works Association. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, very exciting. 1% of cities around the nation. So, item six, Proclamation 1920-26 proclaiming the month of February 2020 Black History Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, since its origin in 1926 as Black History Week, we have paused to reflect on the many contributions of our African-American citizens that enrich our nation, state, and community. And whereas, 2020's national theme, African-Americans and the Vote commemorates the 150th and 100th anniversaries of the 15th and 19th amendments granting the right to vote to black women or black men in 1870 and women in 1919, respectively, and celebrates the rise of black elected and appointed officials, increasing leadership roles of African-Americans in political parties, and ongoing campaigns for equal rights legislation. And whereas, the influence and accomplishments of African-American citizens have contributed to our community in all aspects of life and have continued to help make Norman a safe, thriving, and vibrant community. And whereas, the city of Norman continues to strive to become a more inclusive community, providing all residents the right to human dignity, justice, and the opportunity to live life fully and achieve their aspirations. And whereas, the Norman Human Rights Commission continues to work to dispel prejudice and discrimination and to advance fairness, mutual understanding, and appreciation for the worth of all people. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community. I'd like to invite Shirley Franklin up to say a few words and to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I volunteer in Norman a lot. I love this town. I thank my husband, Eric Franklin, who supports me and allows me to volunteer so much. I thank my parents, Lawrence and Carrie Davis, who brought me and my brothers Larry, Mo, and Shirley, and my brother Chris, here to Norman, an amazing community, where I was able to take advantage of all of the amazing things our schools had to offer. Dr. Robert Lee Kid and Charlotte Gordon and Kay Holliday. I had an amazing childhood. But the last thing I want to bring to you about Black History Month and why it's so important in this amazing city is my very first memory of Norman, Oklahoma. And it doesn't take place in Norman, Oklahoma. It takes place in Cleveland, Ohio. Because my family came here in 1972 or 1973 and my dad got a job teaching at the technical training facility. And before we moved to Norman, before we purchased property here, before we came to Norman, before we even set foot in the state, a committee of people came from Norman to Cleveland, Ohio, to our home, to interview our family, to make sure we'd be a good fit for the community. That's something that really sticks with a really little kid. And so I'm so proud of our community and what we've become today because I've seen Norman through a lot of changes and I am ecstatic to be a member of this community. Thank you.
Shirley. Thank you so much for sharing that story. Item seven, Proclamation 1920-27. A sundown town apology and reconciliation proclamation of the city of Norman, publicly condemning and apologizing for historical sundown practices in Norman and renewing its commitment to building an inclusive community firmly dedicated to inclusivity, equality, and justice for all residents. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Norman, Oklahoma, publicly condemning and apologizing for historical sundown practices in Norman and renewing its commitment to building an inclusive community firmly dedicated to inclusivity, equality, and justice for all residents. Whereas, although no official explicit sundown ordinances were passed, the historical record clearly shows that Norman effectively was a sundown town for 78 years, from April 22nd, 1889 to 1967, due to various extralegal racist sundown practices. And whereas, under these practices, African-American residents were unlawfully and racially cleansed after the land run of April 22nd, 1889 because of job competition, racism, and white supremacy. And whereas, later periods witnessed mob violence, terror, threats, the freezing out of services such as restaurants and motels, and real estate practices that resulted in the refusal of sale of real estate and homes to African-Americans. And whereas, significant KKK activities sponsored by many influential men in Norman called for no African-Americans residing, working, entertaining, or simply being in Norman after dark. And whereas, the record shows no African-American residing within the city limits of Norman from 1889 to 1967. And whereas, the city of Norman expresses its revulsion and publicly condemns and apologizes for these events. And whereas, the city of Norman is dedicated to honoring those individuals who were deprived of their basic human rights due to sundown practices. And whereas, the city of Norman is dedicated to publicly updating the historical record related to the sundown events from 1889 to 1967 and publicly commemorating those individuals who fought and struggled for human rights during the 78 years when Norman was a sundown town. And whereas, the city of Norman remains committed to building an inclusive community where all residents are welcomed, respected, and afforded equal opportunities without regard to race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, age, place of birth, disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, familial status or marital status, including marriage to a person of the same sex. Now, therefore, be it resolved and proclaimed by the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, that the city of Norman hereby expresses its revulsion and publicly condemns and apologizes for these historical extralegal sundown practices and that no longer and never will again be a sundown town and that the city of Norman hereby reaffirms its commitment to building an inclusive community firmly dedicated to inclusivity, equality, and justice for all residents. With that, I would like to invite a very good friend of mine and mentor, Dr. George Henderson, to the podium to say a few words and to accept the proclamation.
Excuse me. Thank you. How do I say this in a way that you understand what I'm going to say? I thank you for the proclamation. But it wasn't necessary. Paraphrasing a Henry Chapin song, Taxi. My wife Barbara and I got what we were looking for a long time ago. Apologies from the city of Norman. We came in 67. In 1968, members of the city council established a human relations committee. The members apologized to our family and other African-Americans on that day and that commission was established to determine what Norman would do to move forward and be an inclusive community. J.R. Morris, Dr. J.R. Morris, professor of psychology, chaired that commission. They recommended a human relations commission, which was later changed to the Human Rights Commission. And it was passed by the votes of the citizens in 1972. So you see Barbara and I and the other people who were offended, we got what we wanted a long time ago. The Norman Human Rights Commission. I appreciate this, but perhaps this is like renewing vows in a marriage. I guess it's good to do it from time to time. But about this apology. I was a brash young professor when I came and I said at the public hearing, I need no apology. Apologies mean very little to me and my family and my friends and others. But what I need from Norman is affirmative action. And if you're not going to do much more than apologize to me and others, then you've wasted your time with me. And I remember leaving that meeting and having individuals say, "Thank you. Thank you for encouraging us to go beyond apologies." And they did. And Norman did. It is important. And I can't describe this place called Norman. I cannot tell you why I would turn down four college presidencies and heaven knows how many vice presidencies and so forth to stay here. But I know why. The students first. My neighbors and friends second. This is home. This is home. So on behalf of the individuals who indeed made this home, let me say on behalf of what I gave to Norman and Barbara and I gave to Norman. Her mother buried here in Norman. My mother buried here in Norman. My son, George Junior, buried here in Norman. My daughter, Michelle Alicia Henderson, buried here in Norman. My daughter, Lisa Gay Henderson, here in Norman. I've given you all that I expected to ever give you, the city of Norman. And I have no regrets because each one of them loved this place. And this is where they wanted to be. And this is where they are. On behalf of them, I say, "Thank you." Not for the apology, no. It's for what happened after the apology, the Norman Human Rights Commission. So from this old man to you, it's not "thank you" that I say, but I indeed accept your invitation for us to renew our marriage. And I will stay here until I'm gone. Thank you.
All the feels in city hall tonight. Phew, all right. Onto the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items nine through 29 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items nine through 29 on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes. docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. Place items nine through twenty-nine on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Item nine, ordinance nineteen twenty dash thirty-three upon first reading. Rezoning eight oh one, eight oh nine, and eight nineteen, North Finlay Avenue from PUD, Plan Unit Development District, and R-one Single Family Dwelling District to SPUD, Simple Planned Unit Development District. Item ten, consideration of the mayor's appointment of Buddy Dolan, Kristy Wright, and Susan Favors to the Board of Parks Commissioners, Deborah Kretzinger to the Environmental Control Advisory Board, Jamie Shelton to the Library Board, Jan Hunter and Marion Ratliff to the Norman Housing Authority, Dr. Jerry Weber, Joan Greenleaf, and Tom Sherman to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority and currently to the Social and Voluntary Services Commission. Item eleven, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Item twelve, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of December, two thousand and nineteen. Item thirteen, declaration of surplus and/or obsolete equipment and materials and authorizing the sale or disposal thereof. Item fourteen, acceptance of an incentive payment in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars from the Pepsi Beverages Company for the exclusive sale of Pepsi products at the Westwood Golf Course and Westwood Family Aquatics Center and budget appropriation. Item fifteen, acceptance of a donation of a gift card in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars donated by Target Corporation to be used by the Animal Welfare Division. Item sixteen, bidding contract with Simran Construction Company, LLC in the amount of two million one hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and the accompanying bonds for the Gray Street and Tonawas Street Waterline Replacement and Budget Transfers. Item seventeen, special claim submitted by OGN E through CMR in the reduced amount of eight thousand six hundred and five dollars for damage to utility pole at thirty-nine oh one Chautauqua Avenue. Item eighteen, special claim submitted by Carrie Bracken in the agreed amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars for damage to the interior of her home as a result of a sewer backup that occurred on March tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at thirty-five forty-five Brookford Drive. Item nineteen, amendment number two to the contract with Allen Plumber Associates, Incorporated, increasing contract by fifty thousand dollars for a revised amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars to provide water modeling assistance on an on-call basis in association with the FYE fifteen Waterwells and Supply Lines Project. Item twenty, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with Cunningham Associates, Incorporated, for the Cedar Lane Songbird Park Playground Project. Item twenty-one, change order number one to the contract with Parathon Construction, LLC, decreasing contract amount by sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for a revised contract amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars for the Street Maintenance Bond Reconstruction Project from the twenty-seven hundred block of Walnut Road to Emhoff Road, and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty-two, change order number one to the contract with Southwest Waterworks, LLC, increasing the contract amount by nine thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighteen cents for a revised contract amount of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents for the Parsons Edition Waterline Project and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty-three, amendment number one to the contract with Clean Earth of Alabama, Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by fifteen thousand sixty dollars and forty cents for a revised contract amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand sixty dollars and forty cents to pay final costs for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event held at Lloyd Noble Center on November second, two thousand and nineteen, and budget appropriation from the Water Reclamation Fund balance. Item twenty-four, contract with Freeze and Nichols in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to provide engineering design services for the Constitution Street, two thousand and nineteen Transportation Bond Project from Jenkins Avenue to Claussen Boulevard. Item twenty-five, bidding contract with TFR Enterprises, Incorporated, as a prepositioned or standby agreement that obligates contractor to provide certain debris cleanup removal services on an as-needed basis. Item twenty-six, bidding contract with D&amp;J Enterprises, Incorporated, as a prepositioned or standby agreement that obligates contractor to provide certain debris cleanup removal services on an as-needed basis. Item twenty-seven, bidding contract with Custom Tree Care, Incorporated, as a prepositioned or standby agreement that obligates contractor to provide certain debris cleanup removal services on an as-needed basis. Item twenty-eight, contract with Barrett L. Williamson Architects, Incorporated, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to provide preliminary site and building design services for the line maintenance facility located near three thousand East Robinson Street. Item twenty-nine, a resolution adopting a public transportation Title eleven program of the... That's supposed to be Title Nine, right?
Six.
Six. Of the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act, I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Okay, we move on to off-consent. Item thirty, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-six, closing a portion of a platted fifty-foot building line located on the front boundary of Lot One, Block One, Norman Center North Edition. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation? Wonderful.
Hi there, Mason Schwartz, five-two-two, Call Core Drive. Here. Can you hear? All right. I'll be brief. This is a request for a partial vacation of a fifty-foot platted front setback here on behalf of Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is seeking to construct an open-sided canopy to overhang on the drive-through portions of this property on Main Street, although it's not a building by any means in the traditional sense. It is subject to the fifty-foot platted building line setback. We didn't crouch on that, and therefore, in order to construct the canopy, there has to be some sort of vacation, a partial vacation, of that platted setback. So what we have sought to do here is to reduce that fifty-foot line to ten feet in terms of our purpose and need with the canopy. For those of you who have dined or driven by this Chick-fil-A location at peak hours, I'm sure you notice the unique volume that Chick-fil-A does through its drive-through, and I'm sure you've seen it probably at other locations as well in comparison to other drive-through-type food establishments. So one of the strategies that Chick-fil-A has been employing throughout the country and throughout the state has been to deploy its various team members out into the drive-through and take face-to-face orders, face-to-face money. It found... Chick-fil-A has found this extremely effective in helping increase the pace and manage the efficiency and the volume of getting folks to the drive-through line. Of course, one problem that comes with that is exposing your employees and their equipment to the elements, especially on a day like today, for example. And so, once again, around the state, around the city, for example, more location and other locations around the greater Oklahoma City area have been installing these canopies for the protection of their employees and their equipment from the elements. So this is reducing it from fifty feet to ten feet actually brings it into compliance with the property's zoning setback, which would be ten feet. The actual canopy itself would still be... The edge of it would still be approximately fifty feet from the curb line, so it's not as though it's right up on the concrete. We believe it's not going to have any adverse impact on their surrounding area. We are unaware of any protests. Staff recommended approval, so did Planning Commission. We would ask for your approval as well, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any comments from the public regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Ordinance nineteen twenty dash thirty, closing four portions of public right-of-way on the south side of Block Five, Bel Air Number Three Edition. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, David Floyd, thirty-three oh five, Riverwalk Drive. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Woodsrow LLC, Ms. Carol Raper Smith, and the U-Banks Family Trust. We're asking for the vacation of four sections of road right-of-way along where Boyd Street used to run. A little bit of history of what's going on here. When Boyd Street was originally laid out, it intersected Twenty-Fourth Avenue at a ninety-degree angle, and then you were forced to make a left turn and then go right again in order to continue on east of Norman. That was eventually determined to be unsafe, and so the decision was made back in the late seventies and early eighties to move Boyd Street north. And so when you're driving down that section from campus into the intersection, that's why Boyd Street will curve back. From all the research that we have done, the original road easement on the underlying section where Old Boyd used to run was never vacated. My clients are seeking to remove the road easement itself in order to accommodate the development of attractive land to the south. Here with me also, and this will come up on the next two items, thirty-two and thirty-three, is Mr. Rick McKinney, who can speak to the SPUD and the development. That's what we're asking for this evening. We are aware of some protests that were filed with Planning Commission. However, Planning Commission did recommend the adoption of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Council member Hall.
Good evening. I'm just curious. I've read the Planning Commission minutes, and I've reviewed all the documents for this proposal. Was there any attempt to have a conversation with the neighbors who were protesting?
Yes, council member. We had contacted them previously to the meeting. We've talked to them since. We've worked out an arrangement with a couple of them. We are providing some extra parking spaces to the south on the right-of-way in order to accommodate their concerns. We've made that concession. I'm not sure it satisfies all of their concerns, but it's what we've been willing to do.
Okay, so there has been some accommodation that you have agreed on?
Yes, ma'am.
With how many of the residents?
That would be with the duplex that's immediately to the entrance. The other two, we have reached out to them. We have not heard anything back.
And all in that same duplex?
No, it's in buildings adjacent to that duplex.
Okay, okay. Well, okay, I'm really glad to hear that. You made an attempt to try to find an accommodation. I actually drove that property earlier today to get it in my mind's eye, and it is a really interesting history about Boyd Street. I didn't realize, you know, how that had originated, and it is a... It's an unusual... It's an unusual situation, so I'm glad you made the attempt to try to accommodate the neighbors. So thank you for that.
I'd also like to point out that we are solely talking about the street right-of-way easement. We are not vacating the driveway easement, so they do still have access. We are also not vacating the utility easements that lie underneath there. The city does have a sewer line, and that easement will remain in place.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Holman.
I've actually wondered about this for a number of years, driving by here, and that's actually a piece of Norman history I didn't know that Boyd Street was... Went through there, yeah. So, but I've always wondered about these duplexes. I remember when they were built and the alleyway that's behind them, and I don't know if maybe our staff can maybe... I'm wondering how this right-of-way, as the residents claim, ended up being maintained by them and not us if we're the... If that's their argument for why we shouldn't mess with it is because they've been maintaining it for eighteen years, I would maybe ask for some clarification about that if we had...
And I would like to just point out that my client developer does dispute that contention. They have been responsible for paying the taxes on it. They've also endeavored to mow that property several times a year.
Your client has?
Yes, so it has not just been the duplex owners that have been doing that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. As I say, right, they've probably done more research than we have on this, frankly, so I'll be honest with you. But generally what happens, this is one of those odd situations, you see them from time to time here, where generally the city doesn't initiate vacations. It's initiated by the adjacent property owners, and I think that's the simple answer to your question. It's never been initiated. There's never been an interest on the part of any of these landowners to vacate that right-of-way. They may not even really have been aware of its status. They were satisfied with the way the layout was, access to their properties, and in many cases, as we find in easements and right-of-way, they use that space thinking it might actually be theirs, and then they're a little surprised when these things come up later. But I think that's my best answer for you, that it just has never been initiated or never been of interest to these owners until this applicant came forward. They did a great job doing their research. They really worked carefully through their site plan, as you'll see here in a moment, to be very thoughtful and mindful of the existing uses and the neighbors' needs as well as this new development. So we've spent quite a bit of time reviewing it, and we're pretty comfortable with what you're going to see here in the next two items.
So this right-of-way of where the street used to be, the city owns that land?
Effectively, the city would be the owner of any public right-of-way. We have, you know, hundreds of miles of it across our city. Generally, right-of-way like this that has not been opened for that purpose, it was never open for a Boyd Street, or it was closed at that time back in the seventies, that reverts to the adjacent property owners for maintenance purposes. Sort of think about it the same as the right-of-way from the back of the curb to the sidewalk. We don't go out and mow that and take care of that. Each of us as landowners do that, even though it's public right-of-way, we don't own it. Same thing here, really, a little bit larger parcels, and my guess is that one or two of the neighbors over the years probably did more or less of the mowing and maintenance. The city has never maintained this space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, council member. Council member Petron.
I was just... My iPad was acting up, and it still kind of is, actually. I have like a, I don't know, hidden buttons on here, so it's making it difficult, but were there slides that went along with your presentation? I was trying to pull up to see. We pulled it up on a phone. I guess I'm just trying to... At the time, I pushed my button. I think I've got it figured out now, but...
Yes, council member. I've got them pulled up now, if you'll see. And we'll discuss this further when we discuss the preliminary plat layout. When we put this together, there were two options as far as ingress and egress into the proposed development. One of them was to do an entryway off of Twelfth Avenue, but when you look at traffic flows, we have to put up a light there, you've got people coming in and out of a residential street onto a very busy roadway, and that was just not a feasible option. The only other mechanism we have to get into this property is to come in, as you will see, off of where that driveway is on Boyd Street. The two right-of-ways run directly down that line right there, and so we are asking to vacate, I'm sorry, those four at the entryway.
And then the other question I had was, is there going to be a fence or something that you're wanting to put up there?
Yes, ma'am. There will be an entryway that'll come down where the driveway is, and it goes into the bulk of the development area. Then there will be a fence that runs along that north side of the property and separates it from the driveway and the duplexes. It will be set back a few feet away from the driveway itself.
Do you know how many feet?
I believe five feet.
That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Council member Hall.
I did have one more question on your slide. So the area, right when you come into the entrance, that there is a concrete, I would call it a parking pad, I don't know if that's what you would actually call it, will that remain, or is that going to be redeveloped? What's that going to... How's that going to turn out?
That's going to be redeveloped, and Mr. McKinney will discuss that in the next agenda items. However, that is going to be a very nice landscaped entryway. There's going to be a little green space there. We've worked with the Green Belt Commission. There's going to be some park benches and things of the like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Carter.
I do want to say, I think I appreciate your using that entrance instead of dumping the traffic right directly on the Twelfth Street. And so for you to be able to complete that design, you need to have this vacated, correct?
Yes, that is correct. It's not viable without it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item thirty-two, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-seven, rezoning property near the southwest corner of East Boyd Street and Twelfth Avenue southeast from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to spud, simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rick McKinney with McKinney Partnership Architects, three thousand six hundred West Main Street, representing Woodrow Development. Thank you for your time. I am, I'm very pleased and honored to be here tonight. This, this project actually started in nineteen sixty-seven. My father bought into a partnership on that land with a vision of doing something with it, and he never did. And he passed away about six years ago. And he handed me his file and he says, Rick, I want you to do something with this land. So it is my honor and pleasure to do that, and I'm doing this with my dad tonight. This property originally was wider. And Twelfth Street, when it was put in, they, they took some additional land to widen the street. So the, the effective buildable width of that land got narrowed. And it's my opinion that that's why this land has not been pursued more passionately before this, because it's, it's just narrower. And I'll address later how we're going to, we're going to deal with that. Let me see. This, this shows the property, like you said, just at the end of Boyd where it runs into Twelfth Street. And this is an aerial view from the northeast. It shows the four rental units on the north side. It shows how Boyd was realigned with the street across Twelfth. And then basically, the overall site, including the right-of-way for Twelfth Avenue, is a little over five acres, and the net buildable area with the right-of-ways that we've discussed already tonight, four point seven acres. Here's a view from the southeast. One thing I'd like to point out is the large trees that are around the perimeter of the site, and that's, that's just truly works in our favor. And we've got a cul-de-sac development that comes down the middle, so we're not losing many trees in the middle. But we've, I laid out all the lots so that the, the large trees would be almost on the property lines between each house. So it didn't dominate someone's backyard, but each, each house could enjoy it. So most of the lot lines actually break on the center line of those, those trees. And that while the trees are not being required to be preserved, if it inhibits the placement of a house, we do have a requirement in the CCNRs that that tree must be replaced with a four-inch caliber tree that meets city standards. Here's a view from the northwest, that you can really see down on that, on that right-of-way area there on Boyd Street. And David, David was very accurate, Twelfth Street is extremely dangerous, there's a lot of, lot of rear-end accidents during rush hour. And you can see on the, on the far side back, that's Beaumont Street that tees into Twelfth Street. That would be the logical place where a developer would usually take a street and line up and put a, you'd come into this, into this site and do a kind of a hammerhead cul-de-sac. And we, we just, we just wouldn't do that. And so this, this right-of-way condition on the front was very complicated. We could not find hardly any records on what had transpired with this land. There was no records of it being closed, vacated, nothing. We went to the, went to the county, went to the city, and we could find nothing. So we, we got with David and said, and I talked at length with staff, and before I go into this, I just want, I just want council to know how, how thankful I am to the planning, engineering, and development staff at Norman. I mean, I work with them all the time, but not in this role. And to be on this side of the fence and be able to work with these folks, they, they just helped me through the whole process, and it was a very, very accommodating effort. So thank you for that. Again, this just shows the two different, the big arrows show the options for the entry, so we selected the one up in the northwest. That, that is an extra-wide driveway that goes in. That little concrete area that Councilmember Hall was talking about is where the mail trucks come in and turn around, or the trash trucks. There's a brick mailbox there that's been hit, it's been smashed, it's been that way for over two years. And so that, that is not parking, that's a turnaround for service vehicles. And I also want to clarify one thing. I, I can't commit that that fence will be five feet off that drive. I can commit that it'll be on the property line. And it ran, you can see that driveway in relation to the white line, the dash line, it has a little bit of slope to it, it's not actually vertical on the sheet. And so the width from the fence to the, to the private drive will vary, but it'll be on the property line. This is a view from approaching the site from the west, we're looking directly. Boyd Street used to go straight to the right of that telephone pole, down where you see that silver car way in the distance. That was the alignment of Boyd. And so all of this right-of-way was created, and it's, it is poorly maintained. Some, the neighbors mow it when it gets high, it's just unkept. So we started to pursue, is that a possibility? Here's a view from the northeast, the size of the trees, you can see. I'm sorry, I go too fast. This is from the southeast. And this is the condition, we, as, as the ownership entity now, we, we try to keep it mowed. I can't say we mowed it regularly as much as we should have, but it's been knocked down frequently. But that's, that's the site. Okay, this is the development plan as it sets today. We have eighteen new lots off of this, this cul-de-sac. And then the nineteenth lot is the, on the, the far right-hand house on the site is, is a detached, single-family. It, it's existing, okay? And the, that lot that you see for that large house there, it goes all the way to the west to a point, all the way almost to the stop sign on Jamie Drive. That is one lot that goes all the way down. And so in order for us to get our roadway in, we had a couple options. We were going to consider getting an easement from him to cross it. We considered buying that unit, and then we would just subdivide the lot and we, we'd put that pointed part into the roadway. So we ended up, we negotiated with him for some time. It delayed us for a while, but we, we came to good terms. And so the, the sharp point, the west point of that lot will now be, you can see, I don't have a pointer here, do I? There it is. Right, right here on my pointer. This is the new lot line. When before, his, his lot went all the way up, all the way up to here to a point. And so this was just unkept and unmowed. And so this portion of the land would be granted, it, the right-of-way is given back to that lot, and then we are acquiring that point. And then conversely, on the other side, where's the pointer? I don't see it. On the other side, next to the, the lot on Jamie Drive, the furthest north lot on Jamie, that little stripper right-of-way, when it's vacated, will revert back to her. And she becomes the owner, then we will acquire that little strip, okay? And then the final right-of-way, the big portion that goes all the way up and down the right-hand side of the green portion of our lot, was never, was never closed or vacated. And it was in, that was, we were entitled to that as landowners, and so that will finally happen. Couple of other things, all of the drainage goes to detention area, I'll talk about that in a moment. You can see the large trees around the perimeter. Those are, those are the size of the, and the caliber of the trees. And so you can see where they're located primarily on the fence lines or in the back of the lots. The other thing is, again, because the right-of-way on Twelfth Street was narrowed up, or was, took, took land out of our sight, our, our east-west dimension shrunk. And so the depth of the lots shrunk a bit. So one of our requests is that instead of having a typical twenty-foot backyard and a twenty-five-foot front yard, we're asking for fifteen and fifteen. And so the backyard is a little bit narrower, but the, and I'll, I'll show you some examples of the design of the homes we're looking at. All of these houses will have side approach garages. No garage doors will face the street. So they, every house will have the room to pull in and be able to park totally on their lot, because they're not parking in front of their garage door right off the street. So that fifteen-foot right-of-way works nicely. Last thing I want to point out, two things, is we, we are requiring in our, in our narrative that every lot will plant a two-inch caliber Schumard oak. And it's right there on the front corner of each lot. So this whole cul-de-sac will be lined with oak trees in short order, as well as the existing trees. And then finally, is our open space up here by this, where we've got this right-of-way. And we've met with Parks Board, like David said, and we are going to be privately dedicating that land as open space, but the community will be allowed to use it. It won't be a public park, it's more like a private open space. And it'll have landscaping, irrigation, it'll be maintained by, by Property Owners Association, park bench seating, if you're walking your dog, you can stop. So we, we wanted to create that space there, and we'd rather do that than just pay a fee in lieu to the Park Board to go do something with it. Because this, this costs us more money, but it's, we feel it's more applicable on, on what we're wanting to do. This is a blow-up of that open space. And again, down, where's my little, I don't have a pointer. There it is. Okay, right here's that private drive, and it used to come here and just go by itself out to Boyd Street. Well, what we're doing now is, like David said, the, the easement is still maintained for that private drive, and they will, they'll be able to bring, come down the private drive and then turn it and go ninety degrees into a new public street. It'll be maintained by the city and the Property Owners Association is going to landscape and irrigate and maintain that entire entryway. Plus, we've, we've spoken to both owners, and they'll allow us to, to repair some of the fences on each side, so it should really be an enhancement to the property. This is that entry that, what I was just talking about. That's the mailbox that smashed, the fences are broken down, that's a broken turnaround for mailboxes, the trash trucks come in, they can turn around there. Right now, the people take their plastic roll-offs and they take them out to Boyd Street from those little rent houses. Or they roll them out there and the trash trucks pull in and try and turn around. So all of that will be converted to this. And that's the S-curve cul-de-sac going in, new sidewalks on both sides, landscaped, fences repaired, new signage, new park bench seating, new lighting. One of the last things I want to talk about is the drainage. And if you remember those photographs we looked at, the site looked pretty flat. It slopes five feet from east to west. Each one of those white dash lines is twelve inches. And so all of this water today sheet flows into those backyards. And actually, it, it actually turns a little bit to the north, and most of it, a lot of it goes through right through here. It goes under here, through this ladies' fence, and out there. Part of our requirement is to detain our water, and we will do that. But, I'll show you the detention here in just a moment, but what we're going to do is eighty percent of the site, right now, a hundred percent of that water drains into their backyards. Eighty percent of the site, the blue area and the purple, will be collected, detained in a dry detention area, which is that purple triangle. And then from there, it'll, it'll be collected in street inlets, because all of the roof water from all the houses will be, it must be directed to the street. Like those houses that back up to the green strip, their water can't go back into the houses. It has to go underground, through plastic pipes to the curb. And it'll be collected, taken to the dry detention area, and then at a timed release, it goes into the, the storm system that's available. So it, it meets all, it's, the, the system's been engineered, and Chris can address that in a little bit. That'll be a grass, it's not standing water, it's dry. This is a sample of the style houses. We call it, it's, it's Craftsman or Bungalow, or we've seen these down in Florida, we call it Florida coastal architecture. Nice details, simple layouts, that's, that shows the, the side approach garage. These houses have a ten-foot front yard. From the, that house to this, to the property line is ten feet. It works great. It, it, when we talked about Center City in Norman, about bringing the houses forward and kind of densifying things, that's what these neighborhoods do. They pull it to the street, but they bring their cars into the lot. So this works out very well. And with that, this is the, you know, I mentioned the dry detention that Chris will talk about. So with that, I'll entertain any, any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Hello, Mr. McKinney.
Hi, Ms. Councilmember Hall.
So when, I still am really curious about how this is impacting that private driveway with the duplex and the houses. So when you, tell me a little bit more about fence location, how, I mean, that is a narrow driveway. How are these neighbors going to get in and out? How, how's that going to work?
There, there's four units. There's three single, three single units right here, one, two, three, and they're all rental. And then there's a, this is a duplex unit right here. I don't know how this was approved. I don't know how it was, was done, but it was. The three houses, these three houses have garages that face the drive. You can pull in and you can back out.
Right. Those, I, I actually looked at all of this today. The one that seems the most problematic is that duplex.
It is. And what we, what, I wish I could blow this up, but I can't. Well, maybe I can, just a minute. Okay, right here. This is that house, and this, there is a section of fence right here that we have agreed to move that fence over to allow for two parallel parking spaces.
Okay.
For that house, because they cannot do a T-turn into their driveway.
No, they can't.
Okay? Now, if they, if they pull in this way and pull right into a parallel space, they either have to back out, or they have to go do a T-turn in someone else's driveway. The balance of the fence, all the way through the end of the drive, will be on the property line.
But, but you've made the accommodation for that duplex right there?
Absolutely. That's, we have a written agreement on that.
Okay, okay. And then you mentioned about the, the mail and the trash using that turnaround?
Mm-hmm.
And that won't be there anymore. And you also mentioned that these folks have been taking their trash containers out to Boyd. Will they continue to do that?
They, they can do one of two things. The, oh, the other thing I want to mention is, we are, we are reconstructing right here a, a joint mailbox for those rental units.
Okay.
The other mailbox is, is in shambles right now, where we're going to rebuild it right there, where they enter their private drive. If they, if they would like to roll their things down and put them on the public street like everybody else in Norman does, they can do that. But most of those houses have gates in their back fence, and they roll them out to the sidewalk right on Boyd Street.
Okay.
These people, I think, bring them out here. I haven't seen it specifically, but.
Okay.
But they will, I mean, this is a public street, trash trucks will come all the way into the end of the cul-de-sac, turn around, FedEx, mail, everything. So it'll be a much improved condition for them, I believe.
Yeah. And your comment about it should have never been approved in the first place, in the planning department, I mean, the Planning Commission minutes, there was some discussion about, well, maybe that's true, but we still have people who are living there, they're going to have to figure out how to get in and out.
Right.
So it sounds like you have made the attempt to try to accommodate their.
We have tried, we spoke to.
Situation.
One of the houses, they had an attorney, they called me, I spoke with them, I shared documents. I invited them to have a meeting and talk about it further, and I, I've not heard anything more about that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
First, I want to begin with, thank you for the compliment that you gave our staff in regards to the planning and the development.
Mm-hmm.
You know, one of the things that we seem to be missing are complaints about the staff here lately. So to hear compliment after compliment is something that certainly warms, you know, our heart, my heart, and I just appreciate you sharing that.
It's well deserved.
I noticed on the picture of the approach off Boyd, and then the schematic of what it's going, yeah, here's the telephone pole, and then we're missing a telephone pole.
That, that's called artistic license.
Okay.
And it's called Photoshop, but that, that.
Are we going to bury that line, is what?
No, I, I, that's not in our budget. But the pole right now is just to the right of that person with their hands on her hips. You know, we do that. Architects can do that.
Well, I do appreciate, I mean, I do think one of the things that the citizens of this city have, are passionate about are the large trees, the existing trees.
Yes.
And the value of an urban forest, so to speak, and their role in that, and the fact that you are putting those shoe-mart oaks in the front in addition to the existing trees, I want to compliment you on, and I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I think we all know that trees provide, you know, I think, a high quality of life. Some real estate websites, in fact, say that large street trees enhance property values in a neighborhood of ten, you know, on average, ten to fifteen percent. So, you know, this looks like a fairly, I hate to use the word unsightly, but definitely is going to improve the aesthetics of this little segment of town, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
In regard to your stormwater plan, something that we've talked a lot about in council and in our retreats and in our stormwater discussions that seem to be endless, is the concept of a rainwater garden, which basically, in those retention-type areas, and I'm just throwing this out as something, asking you to consider, where these bio-retention areas will actually filter and treat, you know, polluted stormwater runoff, stormwater, through a series of just different grasses and different plants in a tiered system. And so, that looks to me, just when you showed the topography of the drop every twelve inches, it just, the natural drop is to that exact area of your dry retention.
Right.
A mesh and area, and so, anyway, I'm throwing that out, you know, something that I think you might find some benefit in, so.
Yes, yeah, I appreciate that, and we will, we will consider that, for sure.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bierman.
So I have a very similar question to Councilmember Carter. Because I am, I actually, I found that the best information that was provided to me about your stormwater efforts was in the Planning Commission minutes. Mr. Khan did an excellent job of helping me visualize what was actually happening, and it looks like, it looks like you're doing a great job of controlling particularly the speed of the runoff with the timed release. And I certainly would prefer for it to funnel as quickly into the system as possible, but one of the other issues that we deal with with stormwater is the impact of more volume of water in our existing system.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not necessarily right here where the issue is, but it's as it flows through the system and flows into places like our creeks, that's where, that's where the problems are being experienced primarily. So, that's part of my concern with really any continual growth in our impervious surface area in this city without a stormwater system to manage it. So, have you done anything here to help reduce the volume
Yeah.
of the runoff and not just the speed of the flow?
Absolutely. And again, Chris Anderson from SMC will address that. But, you know, one thing when we do these detention areas is, we, I mean, there's just a torrent of water, and you capture that water, and then it's let out at a timed release, at a small volume. So it may take six, eight hours for that water to go out. Well, in thirty or forty minutes, Bishop Creek, right down at the end of the hill, the water level's already down. So you're actually coming in behind, behind that big flow of water. So that's, that's the mindset. And we've also done projects on the south side of Norman where they, we're encouraged to bypass that, that big torrent of water come down the creek, and to put your water in the creek quick, so it gets in and out before all this water comes and you don't add to it. So it works both ways, but Chris will address that in detail. But I, I'm aware of that and I'm sensitive to that. But the outlet is what's important. You know, the water can come down and go into that dry detention area, but the size of the orifice that lets the water out is what's key. And how does that impact not only the creek and the floodwater, but the existing stormwater system?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Scanlon.
If I've learned nothing in these past couple of years about stormwater and the permit process that goes with planning things such as this, is first, you do no harm. I guess that question is not for you, but it's for Sean. We've invested money in new engineering design criteria, Sean. When will that be implemented? Is that in place here, or will it happen sometime in the near future?
Thank you, Councilwoman Scanlon. I think you know that council just approved that contract about a month ago, so we are still in the process of working through that, and that will go on for about a year or so, I suspect, with all the public input needed before we, before council will be in a position to adopt those new standards. So, but I'm happy to say that this applicant has met or actually exceeded all of our current standards. They've submitted an engineered drainage report, our engineers have reviewed that, all are in agreement, they are, in fact, exceeding our standards. Rick, even for an architect, did a good job of describing civil engineering design and drainage. I'm impressed, Rick. Not surprised. But seriously, this, I think he did a good job of explaining, unfortunately, Councilwoman Bierman, every new development creates more volume, that until you put a moratorium on development in Norman, we're going to have more volume. You know that. And so I think this applicant has done as good a job as any I have seen in not only designing for the stormwater system, but doing as little development over, you know, fill of impervious area as they can possibly do and still have a tasteful development.
And I'm encouraged by that, because just meeting the standard is not good enough anymore, as I can speak to personally. So I thank you for exceeding. I really appreciate that good work.
Thank you. Would say to have mentioned this, we don't talk about this much, but as we, as our engineers and their private engineers, got a terrific firm, SMC, doing the work here, look at the design recommendations and proposals, we're also looking at the receiving system downstream. We're not doing this in a vacuum. We are looking at the existing pipeline that Rick is showing on the previous slide, we're looking at flooding history, we're looking at the condition of those pipes. In about a month, we're going to have our first-ever pipe TV system that council approved in this year's budget, so we can actually look inside the pipes and see the conditions of those things. So it truly is a cradle-to-grave review, they do a good job with that, but we check them as well, and we're pretty comfortable with the receiving system here.
I thank you in my compliments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other from question, or any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
I'm just curious, when you mentioned the way you're going to deal with all the stormwater runoff, and you mentioned the houses on Jamie Drive.
Yes.
Have they experienced flooding in the past with that water flowing into their back-
You know, I've walked that fence, I've looked over their fence. You can see where there's some kind of mold and mildew in their backyards, where it doesn't get sun under those trees. The one that's had the most trouble has been that first house in, on the corner of Jamie Drive. It, I mean, about a third of her backyard is just washed out. It's, it grows nothing, it's just dirt.
So your plan actually should improve their-
Oh, she won't get any runoff, because there's no way water can get to her yard anymore.
Okay.
So, yeah, every one of these houses will benefit from what we're doing.
Thank you.
No question.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Mary Francis, eight fifty, Cardinal Creek. It looks, I'm really very glad to see that we're doing infill, although it is taking up the green space, rather than more sprawl, gobbling up farmland. That's speaking of sprawl. And I wanted to follow up a bit on Councilmember Carter's statements about the trees. It looks like, if we could go back to that picture that showed the, where the trees Yeah. As I understood it, they're not going to be protected. Is that correct? The contractor will not be told to leave the trees, that he will not be required to leave the trees.
They're not required, but by the design and the site planning, it is our belief that those trees will stay in place.
Yeah. The existing houses there to the, to the west are benefiting already from those trees, of course. And I, I would really hate to see them cut down and replaced with those little four-inch diameter trees. So I just wanted to find out for sure that, that could happen under the contract. Yeah, okay, thank you. But I do, again, compliment you on not going out and gobbling up farmland. Infill is much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments regarding this item? Seeing none?
I couldn't do farmland, because my dad owned this, I was kind of stuck with it. So we, plus, we liked the idea of, you mentioned infill, and I'd like to, I'd like to introduce my partner Charlie Nicholson in the Yellow Jacket. Charlie and I are Woodsrow LLC. Our first development was on Berry Road, the bungalows. And it's our vision to find these type of areas in Norman that, that take creative thought to be able to use them in the best way. And so, we're excited to finally get this one off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Bierman.
So I have been convinced, and this is not something that happens very often, I have taken a pretty strong stand on increasing the impervious surface area in the city without having a stormwater utility. But I am, I am really impressed with what you've done with stormwater here. I really appreciate the attention to detail with it and the recognition of the impact on not just the city's system, but also the neighbors to the north, I always get these maps turned around in my head. So you're going to get a rare exception from me on this, because I think this is the standard to which we should be holding all developers and all developments. And particularly your focus on the trees, that really means a lot. Not every tree can be saved for development reasons, or disease reasons, or any number of reasons, but replacement with as close to a comparable tree as we can get is also really important. And seeing that built into the SPUD document is the most important aspect of that, you know, kind of a handshake agreement is one thing, having it in the document is another. So I am going to happily support this project, and I drive past it all the time and I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
I'll just echo some of the same comments. I do appreciate the urban infill, use of pretty large piece of property that's already in our urban service area. I've driven by this property many times in my lifetime, growing up on the east side, and it is a pretty nice field. And by my rough count on here, I think about ten trees, I think, will be saved if, if the plan stays like this, I guess, but, which is pretty nice. They're very big trees, they're very, very nice and green and provide a lot of shade, so I'm really pleased to see that. And the, again, I would just echo those comments about stormwater, it's a really big deal to us. Without having a stormwater utility, we really have to consider every proposal and how that impacts the overall system currently. So, yeah, I appreciate the work you've done on this, it looks very nice. I like this type of design of house as well, with the garage to the side and the cars kind of pulling up. That's just a much nicer look to me than garage doors facing the street up and down. So I appreciate that, and I do intend to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Yeah, for those of you that don't know the bungalow, when you said that, that's in my neighborhood, it's a very nice, well-done development, and anything that's close to that would be a welcome addition to the community. And to charm my cohort over here to my right, I don't think there's been a yes vote yet.
I'm a tough sell.
So, I'm impressed with that. And then the only other piece of information I might share, and it's been a while, but back when we were building our clinic, we buried about, I don't know, a couple hundred feet of three-phase electrical service, and I was surprised for how little, for what we anticipated it would cost and what it came under. So maybe you could even just take a look at it. Sure, the more, I think, lines we bury, we've clearly demonstrated that that's better for public safety, especially in Oklahoma with our winds and our ice storms, and so just offering that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any other, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the overall design and the thought and care of that has gone into this, and how much I appreciate you taking the time to try to work it out with the neighbors, because it is an odd little piece of property, but it is definitely a challenge for them. But on a larger scale, I've had plenty to say already about how we use PUDs, SPUDs, and CCPUDs in Norman. And to me, this is an example of the kind of creativity that you can bring to a project by using a SPUD, and by taking the challenges of the narrower lot and using, taking advantage of moving those houses closer to the street, all of the different design elements that you've brought to this is really, I think, what we're looking for in these kind of infill projects in core Norman. So I just want to thank you for the thoughtful care that you've put into this, and I can't wait to see how it develops.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no other final comments from council, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item thirty-three, preliminary plot for Boyd Street Commons addition. A simple plan unit development generally located near the southwest corner of East Boyd Street and Twelfth Avenue East. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the preliminary plot.
Motion to adopt. Second?
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item? Public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the preliminary plot. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the preliminary plot passes unanimously.
Item thirty-four, ordinance nineteen twenty-two-eight, rezoning the southeast corner of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest and Franklin Road from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PL Parkland District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Someone?
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
With Wallace Engineering, representing the Parks Department for this application to rezone the property that is Ruby Grant Park. It is approximately one hundred and forty acres at the southeast corner of Franklin Road and Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest. So the city of Norman acquired the property in two thousand and six from the OU Foundation with the intent of, or with the requirement, I believe, to make it parkland. In two thousand and eight, the master plan was approved for Ruby Grant, and here we are, twelve years later, funding has been secured, plans have been developed, and we're ready to move forward. So we are now to the procedural stage of actually rezoning to a park use and the preliminary plot that go with it. As far as this application goes, we've gone through the entire process of public development meetings with, where the neighbors were invited to come out and voice their concerns. We mainly just got a lot of support, and when's it going to be built? As far as the Green Belt Commission, they applauded us on the efforts. We are incorporating trail networks that are integrated with the streams and trying to match the natural contours of the land and preserve- and preserve as many trees on the site as we can. As far as Public Works is concerned, we are extending utilities along the major arterials to provide service to the different restroom facilities that'll be part of this development. Sanitary sewer is in place. There is a thirty-six widening project that Public Works, a capital improvements project that's currently coming through the process. And I think we're going to be slightly ahead of it. But thirty-six will be widened along the entire stretch of this park. And then as far as the staff and their review of the traffic, they do not have any concerns that this development will create any nuisance for traffic, especially with the widening of thirty-six coming through there. It will accommodate cars turning in and out off of that road. And then with Franklin not going through, there's not a lot of through traffic there for people accessing that parking lot. So that, forgot to flip through here. So there's the tract. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, east of Carrington, north of All Saints Catholic School, north of Fowler. It's aerial photo. This is, where are we? Thirty-sixth Street. Okay, this is at the Harvest Church on the west side of the development looking north towards Franklin Road. And this is looking back south from the entrance to the Carrington neighborhood, which all this will be widened. This is looking back south from Franklin Road at the Frontage Road. And Frontage Road. So let's flip through there. As you can see, it's, was historically farmland. And we're doing our best to preserve as many of those metas as we can. The north end of the site will have a parking lot and a memorial pavilion. All the parking lots that are being constructed as part of this development have detention ponds to go along with them to hold back the stormwater, let it out at a slow release so as to not cause impacts further downstream. In addition, with the overall size of the park, the little bit of pavement we're putting in is a small percentage overall. So just any runoff that gets into the grass areas is going to be absorbed rather than going straight into a creek. Here's parking lot site plan along Thirty-Sixth Avenue on the west end of the park. This will have a restroom facility as well as a playground facility. And then there are future plans. And all these parking lots are tied together with trail networks. And then here is the parking lot layout for the east side of the park, down towards the southeast corner, off of the Frontage Road. This will have a restroom facility as well as a dog park facility. So, and then it gets into the preliminary plat. Okay. I'll entertain any questions or?
Thank you.
Judd Foster's here from Parks.
Okay, are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Bierman.
Would someone like to talk to me a little bit about the location of the disc golf course and its relation to parking lots, bathrooms, things like that?
Okay, the disc golf course. I didn't get the overall one in here. I'll do it on this map. Okay, there's my pointer. So the southeast parking lot will be right here with the dog park. The disc golf course will utilize the natural features of the channel that comes through here. So it'll predominantly be on the east side of the park. As far as the trail networks go, there will be a culvert bridge to access the park here and that, or to get to one side to the other to access the holes on this side. As well as the disc golf course community, I believe, is contributing to making their own crossings at other locations. Judd, you might know more details on that. But it's their intent to leave it as natural as they can because they enjoy that for the sport itself. So they're going to, it adds an extra level of difficulty, the more trees they can leave in there.
I have been very excited for this. I actually ran the local disc golf club for five years, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen. So I know they're going to be great partners. I know there was also disc golf representation on the ad hoc committee, which I'm sure helped. So you're saying that it's primarily going to be in the southeastern corner? Is that south? Like I said about these maps.
It'll stretch this whole stream corridor here.
Okay, and is there going to be much interplay with the trails? I know you said you mentioned the trails.
They did take, in the layout of the trails, they did their best to make sure that we did not have any holes where there was a trail between the tee box and a basket. There are a few places where they will have to throw parallel to or, or slightly parallel to, or cross over to get to the next hole. But by design, there's, there are no holes where you're throwing across a trail unless you're just way off target.
Well, I'm not going to say that that doesn't happen. But in other, in other parks at Northeast Lions and at Griffin and even at Colonial too, there is some interplay with, with the trails and everyone seems to be able to make it work pretty well. Just wherever we have the opportunity to put some signage, either for the disc golfers, you know, be wary of the trail over here, or for walkers, be wary of flying discs. I think just the more information that we can give to each side to make sure that we don't have any unnecessary conflicts would be great.
Okay, I'll take note of that and make sure we get plenty of wayfinding. And then there are plenty of trails elsewhere in the park too, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item thirty-five, preliminary plot for Ruby Grant Park located at the southeast corner of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest and West Franklin Road. Or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any additional public comments regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Item thirty-six, resolution nineteen twenty dash sixty-seven, amending the Norman two thousand and twenty-five land use and transportation plan to remove property located between Flood Avenue and Goddard Avenue from industrial designation to institutional designation. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the land use plan amendment.
Motion to.
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Spencer with Cal MacCapra Projects Engineer with Public Works. Served as a project manager for the North Base Complex development that we have in front of you tonight. And that's on behalf of three city departments, Public Works, Parks and Fire. So before you tonight, we have the current, this item, which is a land use and transportation plan amendment. We also have the following two items, which are rezoning and preliminary plat for the same piece of property, which is the North Base Complex located south of Rock Creek Road between Flood Avenue and Goddard Avenue. And if it's okay, I'll kind of go through all three of them since they're all related for sake of time. So the North Base Complex is owned by the city of Norman. It's the current home for the city's fleet maintenance, traffic, sanitation and line maintenance. Put an aerial view up there. It's also the current home for the CNG refueling station, fire station number seven and the fire department training center. The piece of property to the south of Da Vinci Street is proposed as the new home for the city's transit and emergency vehicle maintenance facility, Parks maintenance facility and fire apparatus storage. And so as the owner and developer of this property, city staff has gone through the city's land use and development process, same as would be required of a private developer. And that's why we're here tonight. So approval of council, or approval by council of these applications will pave the way for us to develop either all or portions of the proposed maintenance facilities as well as a chance to clean up a little bit of the zoning for the existing city property that's, that's there. So these applications, they address the land use and planning of the proposed facility only. Funding for the facilities being currently worked by each department. And we've worked closely with the planning staff to prepare for this development on the maintenance facility. And in doing so, we've got the following three applications in front of you tonight. So the first, as we said, was the, the land use and transportation plan amendment. We are asking to amend eleven point eight seven acre tract that's south of Da Vinci. You can see it in the slide there, from the current industrial designation to the institutional designation. And this amendment will allow for the proposed maintenance facilities. And as you can see, it'll also match the current designation of the rest of the city's property to the north and bring that into compliance. So the second application is to rezone the entire twenty-five point eight seven acre property from the A2 Rural Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District. And this is with a special use for municipal uses. We've worked very hard with our architectural and engineering consultants on this project to comply with the city's development standards. In doing so, we do, the only variance that we ask for is a variance for an exemption to the exterior masonry requirement for the buildings. And this variance is to help keep the cost of construction within budget. And it's also consistent with the industrial development and buildings that are in the area, as you see around the airport up there. And so this is the, the current zoning of the property. And this, you can see some of the existing land uses with the airport and even industrial type uses across Flood Avenue. And lastly, let me jump to the, we, requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the North Base Complex. And in front of you is the, is that plat? It's the twenty-five point eight seven property owned by the city. We're planning to plat that into two lots and also place right away over existing Da Vinci Street there in the center. Public utilities are available for the site. Stormwater detention will also be provided. I'll go through a few of the, the different slides here. So we started with the aerial view. You can see the city's property boundary outlined in red. And the existing fleet maintenance and traffic and sanitation to the north there. Wrong direction. So this is a picture of, from Flood and Da Vinci looking south along Flood Avenue. This is photo in the same location looking north along Flood. This is a picture looking west along Da Vinci Street. And then further down Da Vinci Street, this is looking kind of to the southwest. The area on the left is the area proposed for the new maintenance facilities. This is looking north from Da Vinci Street and that's a portion of the existing fleet maintenance building, you see there. So this is the preliminary plat that we saw with two lots. And this is the master development plan. And like I said, we've engaged a highly skilled design team to help us with this master development plan and, and working through some of the design processes and also, you know, here with the, the land use processes and planning processes. So this master plan combines multiple programs, including Norman Forward, public transit and public safety. And we've got a blow-up of the area to the south of Da Vinci proposed for the, the different maintenance facilities. As you can see, we're proposing stormwater detention on the east. As we work our way west, we've got the, the parking for the, the city's buses. We've got the transit and emergency vehicle maintenance facility, Parks Maintenance Facility. We've got some space potentially where the existing fire training tower is for future development. And then as we get on the west, we have a fire storage building and wash bay. So to sum up, these applications were unanimously recommended for approval by planning commission. Planning staff has reviewed and recommends approval and at this time happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
You mentioned the, the fire training tower, so that's planned to be removed as part of this?
In the future, if, if we, we seek to utilize this space, we would, we would have to remove the tower. At this point in time, the, that building would, would stay intact. Talking with the chief, there, there is a lifespan of that, that tower. And so sometime in the future, it's going to need to either be relocated or rebuilt or, or improvements made to. And so we'll probably wait and try to time it with something like that if we need future expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
I think my question's actually for Sean.
Okay.
Mr. O'Leary, I mean, I'm sorry. Of this master plan, which are all of these buildings being constructed simultaneously? Or is this a phased program?
Thank you, councilmember. In the perfect world, we would love to, we've been approaching this on the basis that we would do all of this simultaneously for just the economy of scale, proper use of space disruption one time. But that ball is in your court, in the court of our federal partners and in the court of our, of our funding mechanisms. That's, that's the problem today. This, tonight gets you to the land use zoning and, and development standards like all other developers are expected to meet. But we still are unfunded or not fully funded for this project. As Jason mentioned, the Parks Facility is a Norman Forward project. You have funding of about two million dollars today. The estimate for that is four point one million. We have no funding for the transit maintenance facility. The estimate for that is about six million. And we have about eight hundred thousand dollars for the EVT portion of that. And that's about two million that we need. So we are under, severely underfunded for this project. Nothing will happen, I don't believe, until we solve that funding issue. Manager and I and others were on the phone with Senator In, Senator Inhofe's office this afternoon and, and still working through what we hope to be a grant opportunity. And I know you're going to have conversations in the next week or two or three with Judd and other members of staff regarding perhaps an, an additional Norman Forward geo-bond issue for the voters. I know that's coming your way and this project would be one of those that would be discussed.
Okay. I don't have any problem with the plating and zoning and all of that. But I just want to make sure that decisions that were made in the past up here that have made, made a real bind on budgeting to be spending money that we don't have, I won't vote for that. So when it comes time that it's before me to where I'm going to be deciding whether or not I'm voting for something to start construction on, I'm going to need to know and feel reasonably confident that, that money indeed exists. So again, I don't have a problem with the plating and the zoning, the concept, any of it. I mean, I'm really excited for this to happen. We need it. But I didn't come here to make decisions that I wouldn't make in my own house. And I certainly wouldn't go out and, you know, break ground on something that is way outside of my budget, so.
And your honor, if I can respond to that exact sentiment on our phone call with Senator Inhofe's staff this afternoon, the staff member asked, is it okay if we say you are shovel-ready? And we highlighted tonight, this action of council gets us shovel-ready, which is where we will stand until this funding is resolved. So we are absolutely on the same page.
Okay, I, like I say, the, this part of it is free. Doesn't cost anything to change the plating. So I just needed to be on record there.
Sure, appreciate that. If it's any consolation, councilmember, we, we are not ever authorized to proceed to even a bid opening unless all of the funds are in the city's bank. We've never done that before and would never do that again. And we are not authorized as staff to award any contracts. That always comes to you. We would never bring an award of contract. We would never bid a project if we didn't have the funding to do it. That would be disingenuous to the bidders and it certainly would be noncompliant with our policy. You'll never, I've never done that. You'll never see staff do that here and we will not do that on any of these projects.
Well, I know that it wouldn't intentionally happen. I just know that in this, with respect to this. Well, I know that it wouldn't intentionally happen. I just know that in this, with respect to this, like the senior center, what the money that they have set aside is not at all what they envisioned. And so that's why I was asking if this was a phased out type of scenario or what, because I don't want the municipal building, the, any of that, to be such short changed that we can't realize our vision. I'd rather do it right from the outset. So again, I'm going to vote yes. That's not a question. I just want to make sure that everybody has open lines of communication.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Two questions. City manager, did we find out, we talked about the timeline of the appropriations bill for the money reimbursed. Any, any word on that?
That was the, one large component of today's conversation. And, and, and what we, what we're hearing from our House Representative and Senate Representative is that they too have never seen this situation before. We highlighted this afternoon, just to keep in their mind that the dollar amount returned from the university to the U.S. Treasury, a little over three million. The cost of what they built was closer to ten million with about six million in grant funding. They gave back the value of the depreciated building, three million dollars. We let them know today, three million is where we started the conversation, but our project is much closer to six million than three. And we shared ideas among staff members about whether we needed a special appropriation, whether we could wait for a grant funding cycle. We said we can't wait for a normal grant funding cycle. It's just not going to help us get from where we are today to where we need to exit the facility at OU. They, they don't have a timetable. They said, we're probably not going to be able to assure you we'll put money in your hands between thirty and sixty days. And we said, what we'd love in, in sixty to ninety days is what that timetable looks like, so we can share it with the university and hopefully keep that relationship alive. And I think as long as the university knows, funding is coming, and here's the timetable, we should be able to keep all those plates in the air long enough to get this facility developed.
And then maybe for Anthony, I know Norman Forward is pay-go. So is this two million that is for the Parks and Rec Maintenance Building, is that already in our account and ready to go? Or is it something we're waiting to still be collected?
Yes, sir. The Parks portion of this pay-as-you, is not a pay-as-you-go project. It is, it's part of the Reeves Park Project that was funded in the two thousand seventeen Norman Forward's sales tax notes.
Okay.
But, and that was estimated to be two million, and, and the estimate for the facility is more than that.
And we have to do that before we begin?
Before we can do the other projects at Reeves Park, yes, sir.
Softball fields and all the things at Reeves Park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item?
I have a quick one, and I'm thinking one of you gentlemen can answer it. I was kind of joking with city manager Pyle that if you want to strike the heart of Norman when this project is done, you could take out our entire fleet. What kind of security are we going to have on this area to protect the massive capital investments that we have here?
So we're working with our consultants and looking at the, and it's included in our cost estimating on this to have secured access to most of the facility located south of Da Vinci Street. You can see the, the, the parking lot that's really just north of the Parks Building, so that one would be for visitors and, and other guests that can come in and out, but then there will be, you know, security fencing. It's also a requirement for the, for some of the federal programs regarding the transportation. But there'll be controlled access, gates, fencing.
Because we still allow access to the C and G gas station to the north, correct? Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any other final comments from council regarding this item? All right, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat, council? Excuse me, to approve the land use plan amendment, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The approved the land use plan amendment passes unanimously.
Item thirty-seven, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-nine, rezoning the North Base Complex south of Rock Creek Grove between Flood Avenue and Goddard Avenue from A two rural agricultural district with special use for municipal uses with the variance to the exterior masonry requirement. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Is this is a companion item to the previous item? Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any additional public comments? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Item thirty-eight, preliminary plat for North Base Complex generally located between Flood Avenue and Goddard Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, are there any additional public comments? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Item thirty-nine, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole. Is everyone feeling all right in Norman? All right, well with that, don't you say that. All right, now we will move on to council comments. Councilmember Scott, would you like to begin?
I would love to begin, yes. I went to the Women's March on Saturday. It was a beautiful day. There was a land recognition and addressed by the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Coalition, the statewide. This is an issue that has, is, it's a crisis more than an issue. There are many bills going to the state legislature to address the crisis, and I implore you all to contact your legislators about it and encourage them to move forward with the bills that'll address that. And so that was a little bit of my life. And then Sunday, we had our ward meeting. Thank you to the staff members who were able to attend. It was pretty small and intimate, but it was good. Got some good info, and that's all. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody watching at home and everybody that attended the meeting tonight. Lot of really important issues going on in Norman. One in specific that we talk about a lot recently is public transportation. In the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, which I chair, the fourth Thursday of every month at four P M. here at City Hall, we go over the ridership reports for the public transit system, not only the monthly reports, but also the year, year-to-date report on ridership. We talk about things like bus stop improvements, routes, really anything that comes up, any kind of issue that might be going on with the system. We have staff on hand that can generally answer any questions about what's going on, or if there's any problems, we can generally get them addressed pretty quickly. So I've been trying to extend an invitation to anybody in the public that's interested in public transit to please attend that meeting once a month, and we can continue to have those detailed discussions and answer questions you might have about the role the city of Norman has in, in the public transit system now that we've taken it over, and the plans that we have to improve it and make it better, just as we promised we would do when we asked voters to approve a funding source. So that's it this week. I appreciate all of you, and we'll see you next time.
After last night's candidate forum, which was an interesting experience, I did as I try to do a couple of times a week, I drifted over to the warming shelter. As of last, well, last night, we had some thirty-three people, eight female and the, the balanced male in the facility. Issue. A statistic, we had a, we have an ad hoc committee on homelessness, and we meet every Tuesday morning, as we did this morning. And as of this morning, we've seen a total of a hundred and forty faces in that facility since it opened in early December. Of that number, one hundred and eleven were new. New in this, to the extent that they were not on any roles, on a list for housing, for services, that kind of thing. We are meeting people, and we're attacking homeless issues one person at a time. And just as an example of what that means, there was a kid that came in last night, and I'd seen him before at the homeless, or the warming shelter. He'd been casting around for a job, and with the job, he was going to get a, a rental room somewhere, and, and bottom line is, he came in last night, he got the job. He's asked if he could stay another few days until he had a paycheck so he could invest it in a room. But there's a success story, one success story, but it's one of, I hope, many. And one of the things we talked about this morning in the, in the committee meeting was documenting that story and others, so that when we conclude this warming shelter exercise on the twenty-ninth of February, we'll actually have some stories to tell that will show the people of Norman that this, this effort is worthwhile and provide support for futures, well, provide documentation for future support of this and similar efforts. And with regard to the homeless, we, we did a point-in-time inventory, as many of us on the council participated in last Thursday. A, a pretty good success. The numbers will take a while to come in on that, but we went out, we found, for example, that the homeless encampments in Sutton Wilderness are no more. They left a lot of trash, but the people are gone. Maybe we attracted them to the warming shelter, maybe not. But that was a, a big effort. You'll hear more about the results of this in the days and weeks to come. There's going to be a follow-up, as HUD would like us to do in mid-May, where we'll go back out, not as extensive an inventory as, as we did last week, but a revisit to some of these homeless folks that are out along the river, for example, and to see how they're doing. Anyway, homelessness's a big deal. We're working the problem one person at a time. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody at home who's watching. We have a pretty sparse crowd still left, but thanks for all of you who have stuck it out with us tonight. I'd like to announce my Ward Four meeting, which will take place tomorrow night, Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty P M. In the Norman Central Library in the Pioneer Room on the third floor. And I'm happy to announce that our guest tomorrow night is going to be Tim Vermillion, our forester. Trees are a hot issue in Ward Four the last few weeks, so I'm delighted that he'll be able to come and share the work that he's doing and how glad we are to have him on board. So I hope you all can come out and have a chance to visit with our new forester. I also want to congratulate Ward Four resident Jo Greenleaf, who was reappointed to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority tonight. She's done really good work there, and I'm glad to see that she's going to be continuing. That's all I have.
Coronavirus insanity. So I brought this up actually at the Homeless Task Force meeting this morning as well, but actually, with the epidemic that we have happening in Oklahoma is the flu. So I was just looking up the statistics on it, and since September the first through mid-January, we've had one thousand one hundred and fifteen hospitalizations and/or deaths in the state of Oklahoma. So this is the, as much craziness as we feel over the, myself included, over the coronavirus, I would just encourage everyone that you can still get a flu shot, and to practice good hand hygiene, to try to keep everybody without the flu. The point-in-time count, I would consider a major success. I was really impressed by how many volunteers, compassionate Normanites, that showed up to help Michelle and Officer Bryant, whose hearts are some of the biggest I've ever seen in my life. We are so fortunate to have those two on this, on staff here. I would reiterate what councilmember Scanlon said about being patient to wait for those numbers. It's really a lot of work. It's a massive undertaking for staff to get the paperwork together to get a final number, but as soon as they know, they will share it as promptly as they can. Let's see. Oh, and I should also mention our C O C. Partners. Just, I learned so much during that count, and I was just walking those trails and speaking to our unsheltered residents, but our C O C. Partners that are on the ground every single day, just some of the best humans you'll ever meet in your life, and just so grateful that we have these partnerships. One really, I'd like to give Norman Regional Hospital a huge pat on the back, because as I brought up the flu epidemic this morning in the Homeless Task Force meeting, our partner with Norman Regional promptly got on her phone and got us seventy new flu shots to administer to our residents who are in the homeless shelter to help fight that epidemic with our sheltered people in the, warming shelter. Let's see. Last night, the public meeting on the budget was, for me, I was just really grateful at how many people showed up, and there's some great ideas that they came to the podium and were willing to be a part of the conversation. And that's what I really love about Norman, is that even if you don't agree with everything that everybody says, at least they care. And everybody wants to have, to see our community thrive. And I just was impressed with most of the conversation being forward-facing. There were, you know, the amount of finger pointing or whatever, you know, anger was at a minimum, in my opinion. I thought it was some really great ideas that I look forward to this council investigating further to implement. And continuing, I, the main theme I kept hearing was prioritizing, bettering people's lives. That continued to be a theme over and over again, is that our budget should, you know, whether it's helping disenfranchised folks, public health, public safety. It was about helping people among, you know, helping each other, helping those amongst us, and I really took that to heart. So like I was speaking about a few minutes ago with respect to one project, that's not the only project that we have that our eyes are bigger than our dollars at the moment. So I just want to make sure that we are always keeping our eyes to include and, you know, our fellow brethren and making sure that we're not leaving them out of the conversation. So that we don't make budgets that leave people behind. So I hope that I was clear earlier, whether it's, you know, maintenance complex, municipal complex, any of them. We've got to make sure that we can pay for what we want to build and not say, yeah, go ahead, we'll figure it out in two years when the bills come due, as a council. We can't do that. So, yeah, can't spend money we don't have. And then there was also last night the idea of reallocating our sales tax dollars to be a different split, taking more to the general fund and away from the capital, and I think that's really something we need to be moving on as quickly as we can. Same thing with the hotel, motel tax, reallocating to where those are dollars that are going to our people and the betterment of their lives every day. And bringing some relief to our general fund. And the day shelter is something that I know councilmembers Scanlon and others on this dais agree that we have a huge need here in this city for a day shelter. So I think that I'm really fortunate to have colleagues up here who care deeply about this city and a city staff that cares deeply about the people of this city. And I know that we can work together and continue to keep moving forward. So that's what I have.
I, I thought of a funny story when we were listening to the proposal, and it has to do a little bit what I feel like, councilmember. and it has to do a little bit what I feel like councilmember Bierman and I were visiting about, how we're kinda sensing this cultural, what we're seeing, and maybe it's kind of a cultural shift, where people are really starting to appreciate and find value in managing stormwater correctly, preserving trees. And the funny story is when I built my veterinary clinic, I think it was almost exactly twenty years ago when I started scratching on it. It was, this is how a vet builds a veterinary clinic, on a piece of, an envelope, and you go down to City Hall, and you're gonna wanna build this, you know, this clinic, and well, they said, you needed an architect. And I said, you gotta be kidding me. So it's like, and they said, well, let me look at it. And I said, well, there was this giant pecan tree on this lot. And it was like, and so I designed this clinic, you know, in a horseshoe shape around this pecan tree. Well, first thing, you know, it's like, it's gonna save you a lot of money if you cut that pecan tree down. I said, but I like the pecan tree, you know, I wanna keep the pecan tree. And so I'll go to the architect. Well, I go to the architect, first thing out of the architect's mouth, you know, you're gonna save a lot of money if you cut that pecan tree down. It's like, well, I don't wanna cut the pecan tree, I wanna keep the pecan tree. And same thing, builder, inspect, you know, just all along, you know, where, you know, it just seemed like, you know, there wasn't a sense of value, the same value I did, I had in the trees, that, and the bearing of the lines, that wasn't part of maybe the culture. It seems like it's coming, and I'm very encouraged, you know, by that. And the second thing I wanna talk about is, I apologize for missing the budget meeting last night. We had some out-of-town guests here that previously committed, but I did watch it. And I, too, was encouraged by it all, and the tone of it was very, very positive. And I just wanna, you know, I mean, there was a little criticism, I think, council took, you know, in terms of like assuming that this money was gonna be available, but as a businessman for over thirty-five years, and we, you know, every time you do a budget, it's assumptions, you know, and so I don't feel any guilt in that. You know, we assumed certain things, and I remember back to, I think it was our first city retreat two years ago, almost, and in my staff meetings and just everything, you know, there was a imminent budget, I'm gonna, I hate to be dramatic, say crisis, but very severe budget shortfall, we were staring at in the very near future. And we had a, you know, short-term versus midterm versus long-term, you know, budget problems. And so when the TIF allocation, I'm gonna do better about saying allocation, would end, it would, you know, solve a certain long-term problem, you know. We had this short-term, long-term problem, mid-range, I'm still, I still see that we have long-term problems, you know, salaries, costs just continue to go up, sales tax is a challenge, there's gotta be all these good ideas, like some of the ones you just said, you know, have to all be reexamined. We may even have to look at this income tax sometime down there, councilmember number eight. You, so, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, no, so anyway, but, you know, I was always making my decisions way back when based on certainty, you know? And so I felt like we were just maybe not always, you know, could we have a better deal? Yeah, it wasn't the deal I wanted initially, but the path we ended up taking was what I thought was the most certain path to avoid delaying and creating this onset of a very severe budget decision-making period. And so little did I know that it didn't provide certainty, and now we have uncertainty again. And, you know, and that's just part of the democratic process, and I, you know, I think it's good, you know? So, but I have no doubt, you know, maybe there'll be some resolution February twenty-fourth, or within thirty or sixty days, but, but, you know, we're gonna have to make some really, really tough, you know, choices. But I think they're all, I mean, to me, I'm trying to be optimistic in that I believe it's a short-term thing, you know? We're just gonna have to pitch in together, and we're gonna have to just figure it out. We're gonna have to have the tone that we saw last night with the beginning, of good tone and a positive discussion. And we work with the staff, and we're gonna work with our citizens, and we're gonna work together as a council, and I think we're just gonna figure this thing out. And it'll be squeaky for a while, but I've got, if there's one thing I have developed extreme sense of confidence in our city staff, our new city manager, and I just think we're gonna get there. So I just want everyone to, I wanna share that optimism that we're gonna get through it.
Well, I was gonna say that it was just my optimistic nature rubbing off on you, but I think also, I think also my ability to speak for longer periods of time is rubbing off on you, too. So I, too, wanted to just extend my thanks to staff for the point-in-time count. I was on a team that went out to Lake Thunderbird, and I will say that one of the things that this really showed me, I walked through parts of Norman that a lot of people don't walk through. And I feel, I feel like, on the one hand, we are doing everything we can and taking as many steps as we can to address the crisis of homelessness. But what I think is also really important, what I discovered during the point-in-time count, is just how many nooks and crannies of this city also really need a good, healthy cleaning. I happen to know one little spit of land where I think every Styrofoam cup in Norman ended up. I mean, it was, it was breathtaking. I mean, I took photos because it was that bad, and I know that other teams uncovered other areas that are gonna need some very extensive cleanup, and it's gonna require some community support. Some of it is not on city land, and those landowners need the community's help as well. So I have a feeling that in the next weeks and months, you're gonna start seeing cleanup events for different areas pop up, maybe some requests for some community partners who might have things like rollaway dumpsters, and ways that we can kind of help, help clean that up as well, because that, it's not, and some of it isn't even related to homelessness at all, it's just the way our, the ebbs and flows of our city have pushed things like litter and debris and wind trash just everywhere. So please be ready for that. I do also want to share a little bit of a story about one guy that we interacted with, because I think that this was a pretty stark reminder to me of just how close any single one of us could be to a similar situation. This man was in his mid-thirties. Last year, last summer, he got divorced. His wife ended up with the house. Within a month, he had been laid off from his job. He had no home, he had no job. He utilized the courtesy and the generosity of his friends for as long as he could while he attempted to find another job. In the meantime, his car was repossessed. And then the generosity of his friends ran out. And so he was staying at City Rescue Mission in Oklahoma City and felt that it wasn't a good fit for him. He certainly wasn't going to speak ill of the people up there, but it was not a good fit for him. So he came down to Norman, and for about four months now, he's been trying to figure his life out, but he said, what do you do when you have no job because you have no car, but you have no car because you have no job, and it's hard to get a job because you have no home and a regular place to shower? And the cycle continues. He was very optimistic, he knew nothing about city resources. When we asked him where he was staying, he referenced a place and made it sound like that's where everyone was staying, that, you know, that's just where he knew to go, because that's where people stayed. And he was really grateful to know that there were resources for him, because some very important medications he was on were about to run out because he was no longer at City Rescue Mission and no longer had the same access to services up there. So I thought that that was pretty reflective of one or two tragic instances that could put any single one of us in a similar situation, no matter how much we think it won't happen. So, and so now, next, on February thirteenth, I'm gonna have my next Oversight Committee meeting. We're gonna be talking about Central Norman Zoning Overlay District, the Senzad, and tools to address or focus density in the ways that we want. We're also going to align our tobacco ordinances to include vaping, because as of now, our tobacco ordinance doesn't include vaping at all. So we're gonna talk about that. And possibly also, if it looks like we've got room on that schedule, 'cause I'm getting to CPTC-length agendas here, we'll also be hopefully looking at an ordinance related to banning spam lawn advertisements. I don't know why that's come to a head in recent months, but Norman residents have had it up to here with the lawn advertisements that get thrown onto their lawn, they do not want them, they cannot get them to stop, and they are just awful. So, and then my last comment is that I went to Dallas this last weekend with my husband for our late Christmas present to each other, and we did a brewery tour. It was my idea, I put together the whole thing, I found us a great hotel, I found all the best breweries in Dallas. And oh my God, there are some ridiculously cool ones down there, including one Manhattan Project that has the most wonderful permeable parking. It's a combination of minimal amounts of concrete and really big gravel. And I asked them how they came up with it and how they ended up with it, and they were like, well, there was a business down the street that had it. And so we asked the city if we could do it, and they said yes. So they just liked what they saw, I don't think they knew, I don't think they had the same thought process that I did, 'cause I'm going, oh, I wonder what their ordinance says about that, or how they get that in there? And they just went, it just looked nice. But I also was, got a chance to kinda look at the DART system while I was down there, and kinda look at how they've meshed everything together, and they've got a really beautiful system down there, and it makes me even more excited for the RTA. But I say, one of the things that I love about visiting new cities is seeing some of the things that are probably going to come to Norman that we might need to address. And I was shocked to get to Dallas and see that Uber drivers had digital advertising signboards attached to the roof of their cars. So can you guess what is probably going to be on the May or the June Oversight Committee meeting? Do we want them, do we not? But I think we should have the conversation before we end up with them, because Dallas doesn't have a policy. So they just exist and apologize for it later. So I really like going to cities like Dallas, which kinda feel a little bit like Canary and Coal Mine, our regional Canary and Coal Mine when it comes to issues like this. So I was taking a lot of notes, I took a lot of photos, and now my agendas just get longer. So I don't know if anyone knows of a way to add a couple extra months to the year, or something like that, 'cause I really need more agenda space. So I will be doing a summary email after that meeting with everything that we talked about to council, to the public. And I did the same thing yesterday with the budget meeting. So if you haven't checked my councilmember page, I sent staff some questions I wanted answered, some additional dollar amounts I'm hoping to be generated, so that in this budget discussion, we can work with some hard numbers. And I share councilmember Carter's optimism. I think we're gonna get there. We've got about an eighteen-month problem, because regardless of what happens with the referendum, the TIF will have collected enough increment by December twenty-twenty, or January twenty-twenty-one, and then no matter what happens with the referendum, the increment is restored to the general fund. So I know I'm looking forward to that date regardless of what happens in the next eighteen months, but I have no doubt that the hard work of these councilmembers and this staff will keep the buses running, and will keep things getting mowed, and we will still be sitting in here with the lights on every other Tuesday. So, thank you.
Alright, I'll keep my comments short. I also participated in the pit count, it was very eye-opening. I brought some students with me so they could see it as well. And I did do Sutton Wilderness, and it was nice to see that people have moved on, but there's gonna be a massive cleanup effort, and I have offered to lead that. And when I went to jog at Sutton and do our little motorized boat that my kid got for Christmas in that little pond, I also brought a trash bag and filled it up on my way back to the car. Not actually in Sutton, the trails are quite nice. We went all around the disc golf and said hello, it was packed, the dog park was packed. My husband was very surprised to see so many people out, not only because it was January, but because he just, he hadn't been there, he hadn't seen that people do use the parks, they do appreciate the services we provide. And so my youngest son, for some reason, he really enjoys picking up garbage, he's got little kid-sized gloves, so I'm just capitalizing on that one. And we took the long way back to the car and filled up a whole bag of trash along Twelfth Avenue. So that's something anybody can do, you don't have to wait for a cleanup for that. But I would like to talk to staff about doing another Ward Eight, Ward Six, because Ward Six wraps around Sutton, which is Ward Eight, and seeing if I can help with that one for sure, 'cause it's needing some love, again, not so much the trails, but the outskirts. Something I'd like to put on your calendar, we have a tour of the Water Reclamation Facility. That's right, the STEM of City Hall, right there. It's happening, it's on Jenkins, it's ten AM on Saturday. Everyone is welcome to attend. Go see where your utility dollars are going, what it's paying for. We all take for granted when you run your dishwasher, or your washing machine, or flush the toilet, that it just goes away, and it does, but go see where it goes, it's fascinating. So I will be there, hopefully some of my colleagues will join me, ten AM Saturday at the Water Reclamation Facility. With that, that is all I have. City manager, do you have anything to add tonight?
We'll get you those point-in-time census results as soon as they're hot off the press. We'll send them to you electronically, and I think just, those are just important numbers for us all to know and keep in the back of our minds.
Awesome, well, thank you all, colleagues, for your hard work, dedication, and optimism. We are all lucky to live in the greatest city in the state of Oklahoma. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.